It is now seven o'clock PM. February twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, Clark County Council. Thank everyone for attending. The executive session pursuant to KRS sixty-one dash eight one zero one be deliberation on future sale of real property by a public agency. But only when a public agency would be likely to be affected by the value of this piece of property or to be sold by the public agency. So we're going to the executive session after the meeting. First item is to receive input from the public.
Yes.
I'd like to speak. I'd like to reiterate that this is a meeting for the council to discuss city business only and not to address issues with the mayor or the council. Those issues are to be addressed elsewhere in another...
I have no question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me? Not yet. He was talking first, please.
No, I'm busy.
No, no, not yet. Francis, thank you. Joe, finished? I have Francis, you ready? Councilman Francis.
I'm reading a document through the city council. City council member comment. City council members are permitted to offer comments or observations about their community and operation of city business. Agenda for regular meeting, including any supporting documents or items on agenda, will be included in the individual city council member. What Councilman Buckman indicated, I wasn't aware of it and also, not to my knowledge, I don't know how many other councilmen have that information. My conclusion, manual order number twenty thirteen nineteen has been revised, I mean been reviewed and agreed upon by the city council of City of Boystown and shall remain in effect until repealed, superseded, amended. You cannot add new language to this manual order, Councilman Buckman, without the city council approval, without amending this manual order. We voted on it.
Thank you, Councilman Lynn. We'll address that later on down into the, uh, into the meeting.
Mayor.
Yes? Okay. Uh, I would also like to draw a record saying that, um, the statement that Councilman Buckman read was his own personal opinion did not reflect, uh, depending on the council because, unless I'm misremembering, uh, we, uh, we hadn't adopted that, that particular policy. Uh, we'll discuss it later. Then, let me, uh, if you may.
May I have a question? What I indicated for the records down in part? What I indicated for the records?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on with, uh, with the meeting. I have something for the council. Excuse me, not yet, please. Uh, the first item was agendas received, input from the public. Uh, person on this is Mr. Richard Nest. Would you like to speak?
Not at this time, ma'am. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Uh, next name, uh, is number two, I don't, it's...
Pardon? It's the gentleman in the corner.
All right, okay. Yes, sir. It's your turn. Thank you. All it takes is four votes.
Excuse me, before you go on, I do need your name.
Reverend Kaufman.
Thank you. Thank you.
The council, all it takes is four votes to have a mayor's roundtable once a month. And that is for the public and come in, come in, sit down with the mayor and the council to discuss business that you all don't consider city business. And all it takes is just four votes, one to make the nomination, one to make the, uh, one to make, one to second, and two others to vote it. And I would ask that you would do that tonight and require that the mayor be there to hear the citizens of Boystown and any concerns that they have. That's the first thing that I have. Anybody like to respond to that?
The second thing is some racist statements that have been made.
You're out of order. You need to sit down, please. You're out of order. That has nothing to do with city business. Thank you.
Well, it does when we are the citizens.
Citizens, however, you are out of order.
It does when we are the citizens. I'm a citizen of Boystown.
Chief McCovas, please.
And everybody else is in here who is in the Boystown.
Just go over.
That is city's, citizens' business.
City, you are out of order. I'm sorry.
But isn't, isn't that city business?
You are out of order. This is not city business at this time. I'm asking Chief McCovas to restore order and I'm asking you to please sit down.
But, but I have a concern, the concerns, the mayor making racist statements, that's not city business.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
So I want this on record that the chief of police has escorted me, I don't know whether to jail or out of here, but it's city business when you make racist statements and you put it in the justice stand.
Sir, you are out of order. Mr. Hurst. Yes, you're number three on the list, man.
I'm scared to talk.
Is it your city business?
Yes, it is. I feel it is. Jack Hurst, one twelve, Burt and Boulevard. Uh, I've come because it's concerned utilities. I'm a little guy and I've basically been extorted from. I come out because I want my money back. Um, if I go back to, to the, I'm going to address Tampa fees and then whatever else that's been dreamed up against me that I really don't know. You all possess the records. Uh, a son of, a, a summer a year ago, I was charged four hundred and some odd dollars in my bank account. It was taken from the city, from Farmers Bank. I caught it at the end of the month. I went to Farmers Bank, nobody seemed to know anything about it. I came here, I even, I did open records here. Nobody could give me an answer as who okayed what. The money went, but then the money come back to me, okay? I was paying my utility bills, thought everything was all right. I took the money back, I didn't actually come here. Now, let's fast forward ten months. Let's, we're going forward ten months now. Nothing happens for ten months. Never got an answer as why it was took or who took it or who authorized it or anything. You go forward ten months and my, well, unbeknownst to me, the internet was cut off the week before. Where I am is signals week and I just, I've been having trouble with it, okay? But then the next week, the water's cut off on a Friday afternoon, three thirty, four o'clock on a Friday afternoon, the water's cut off. I came to the city. Uh, your chief financial officer said with very much attitude that it was for Tampa fees. And that's four hundred and some odd dollars for Tampa fees. Uh, the, 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 in the place of law, I, I think you exceeded the two hundred and fifty dollars, you know, the state statutes and everything there, but I don't know to even to this point specifically what I was charged or why I was charged this, okay? But I paid him with a credit card that day. He fell down in the floor twice, but I paid him, but they were going to hook it back up that afternoon. They did. On the way out the door, I told Mills, I said, "Yeah, you need to look at the internet because there's something wrong with the internet." I was told by your chief financial officer with attitude, "We just cut you off to get you to come in here to pay the water bill," okay? Which turned out to be Tampa fees, all right? I wanted to know how I tampered with it, whatever. I, I, I received no answers. I received a lot of attitude. I had no due process, but I paid it. Thought everything was okay. I made a report to the mayor, then, the then mayor, uh, and received no answer. We're going to jump down the road about two or three months, you, it's, it's reflected in y'all's bills. You hold all the records. Suddenly then forty some dollars appears, appears on my bill again. Now, the day they turned the water back on, I asked him, "Are you sure this is all of them?" I'm going to guesstimate it was four hundred and eighty dollars or somewhere about, but it's in the record. I, I've discussed it with Kathy, I've discussed it with Barbie. I've done open records on it. Uh, uh, your Tampa fees, you're, y'all are collecting sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars of Tampa fees a year. If they have the same due process that I've received, they have none. There is no due process, okay? Now, we jump forward down the road, six, sixty, ninety days, whatever, I start getting another forty-five dollars on the bill. I tried to get to the mayor, the then mayor, to try to get here, to try to talk to somebody, to try to remedy it in some way. I don't owe the bills. I've always paid the bills. I spend some fifteen hundred dollars plus with the city a month, okay? But the can, basically, I kept requesting, had to keep coming to the city and requesting to see the mayor of the council, never deaf ears, it always deaf ears. Then we got the election, they kept kicking the can forward down. Now here I am, but let's go back two or three weeks. Guess what you did? I've been paying the bills, office of this whole thing, the bills are paid every month. They're paid with a discount. Couple of weeks ago, what happened? You cut the internet off, off on me again. Now, the reflective of what your girls are telling me downstairs or whatever over there is that it has something to do with water, but they can't tell me what the charge is for. I, I want to know what the charge is for to justify it so that A, if I owe it, I'll pay it, but I don't think I owe it because if it had to do with Tampa fees hook me back up, I was to pay everything that day or you wouldn't hook me back up. But now we're to the point now where you've got, you've actually cut me off of the internet a couple of times and I paid for it. You owe me money.
Let me, uh, let me do this. Mike's not here. What I'd like for you to do, not to speak for the prior administration, for me, because I can only act from January the first to, to the present. So what I'd like for you to do is to come in and you and me and Mike and listen down and look at that and see where that goes. Give, give, give me a chance. I, I said I can't, I can't do nothing about it.
I appreciate that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have said anything, I didn't want to make an issue of it now, but then they start cutting my services off. I'm marked, well, I'm going to say this, I'm marked now for cutoff the third day of March. Can we either meet before the third day of March or can you not cut me off till we meet?
Now, I, we, if you, if you'll get with Kathy, I'll meet you before the third day of March. Okay. Let me get it. Thank you. Thank you. Rosemary?
Yes, sir.
Monica.
I have given my reasons for Tom McDonald.
That's okay.
I'm Rosemary Bonham. And I'm here to speak on behalf of two, of the two hundred block of South Elm Grove. Three topics, a stop sign, plowing, and paint. Number one thing is this, this is our, our no outlet block here. This is Stephen Foster. Um, the stop sign was put there two or three years ago. Um, I don't know who requested it there, it is a single stop sign. Um, and it stops us coming out of the no outlet. However, we have eastbound Kurt's Avenue traffic, this is south here. When they come here and we're coming back home, we run into this corner and there's no protection here. So we're asking that the stop sign be moved here. This is a T, a T road configuration. This is a private drive and these people and many cars coming in here, myself included, have, had some close encounters. And my request is that that single stop sign be put over here on Kurt's, stopping the eastbound traffic. Secondly, plowing, we feel kind of like we're forgotten back here. Um, when the snowfall comes, they always do curbs and they go around the corner here to the one hundred block. We had a two and a half to, a pretty good sized mound and we could not even get our cars through or over. Um, by the third day of that last snowfall, I talked to someone in the city and they were very considerate and they did send a truck down here. We only need a single lane, but we need a lane for those of us back here on these driveways to get out. Um, we have always shoveled this out and that's shoveling the street and the lady in the office said we do not need to be responsible for that. Thirdly, we moved here in ninety-one and within a year or two, this road was paved. Eight to ten years ago, they repaved this same spot they plowed and they ignored this. We're down to gravel here, there are holes in the street. And again, that put us a very uncomfortable ledge that we had to go over because they didn't run blacktop back to me on the street. This street ends about two block, or two car lengths past our driveway. And if the plow would come down there, I gave them permission to turn around in our driveway. It's a triple one, so a big truck can turn around there. Um, and we just asked that you not forget us down there. Also, limb service, we can't get, they did do some leaf pickup, but basically they don't want to back down here because it's a no outlet. Therefore, we've had leaves sitting on the curb here, not the curb, it's just the street, have totally decayed, they've taken over the street and we're losing payment. I mean, it's just a neglected block. We're right next to Colonial Nursing Home, which is up over here. And those are the things we just asked, um, get a little help down there. We had to carry limbs down here because they always pick limbs up at this Victorian house. However, we don't, she's from California, very considerate and lovely neighbor, but I don't think we should be putting our junk on her property.
Uh, the answer to your first question about the stop signs, I'll get with, uh, Larry Hampton and Jessica, they're actually the engineers. I think we had discussed that once before in that area during the Maple Hill group discussion.
Right.
Uh, I will reiterate that with him and see if he still holds with that and then I will talk to, uh, Ben Burr, our Public Works Supervisor. And if we get another snow, I'll make sure that that is graded out and then I'll talk with him about the leaf pickup or the limb pickup right there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doc. Good on you. Keep that in mind, please.
And then I'll, uh, I'll, I have your phone number here and, uh, I'll have someone to contact you if you need it, not myself.
Thank you, sir.
I'll commit to comment. I don't know that the city vehicles should be turning around in a parking lot because if we damage our parking lot, we're going to be responsible for repair. Our truck is pretty heavy. I mean, it's not, it's a city street, it's not a parking lot. Oh, you're talking about her driveway? Yes. Her driveway, excuse me. Right, there's another issue with backing up that long driveway that I want to talk with, uh, risk management about backing because we do have them in risk management. He is, he is really on hands with this, so there might be some sort of, uh, risk issue there, so we might have to do something, but I'll get with them and I'll get with, uh, Jessica and Ben Burr. And then I'll, you council members, I sent an email out to you to get this going. Good point. Uh, number five, Mr. Shawn Sheckels.
This is to the council, to the council. Um, I would like to know if you would offer any suggestion for getting an audience with the mayor. The office has been called four times, uh, only received one call back and we still can't get on the calendar, so if you would offer any suggestion.
Thank you very much. Mr. Penn Bogart?
Yes, sir. Just sorry, will it finish? Uh, I just want to make a brief comment about item on the agenda for the former Tannery Hill property. Is that appropriate at this time?
No.
All right. I'm familiar with the property. I lived near it and, uh, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the city to enlarge its park system and to have a potential connection between a new park, which is really like a wildlife nature center. Uh, it's abundant wildlife, it's beautiful area, it's got a lot of natural rock out droppings and all of that, but it's a wonderful opportunity for the residents here as well as tourists to connect a potential park area along Tannery Creek with my old Kentucky home, uh, a short walk or bike ride away to, uh, Boystown Village and also up the street and down, uh, North First Street at the end of it there with, uh, uh, Collison Stone Prep starts out down there and also into the downtown. I mean, it makes sense to me and it's a great opportunity, so I'd like to, uh, thank publicly Jan Johnson for coming up with a vision of doing that and also for making the contact with the state agency this year, funding all of it or part of it, I don't know what the details are, and also the city for, um, following through with a proposal to add, you know, it's, it's a valuable addition to our park system and I'm all for it, I think it would be great for the city.
I will. If you get time, I'll give me a call later, Penn, we'll discuss some, uh, ideas. Okay.
I have a question, Mayor. I'm going to respond to the minute, sir. If I'm not mistaken, they do have a, that you indicated city council members can vote for you to meet with citizens of Boystown. I think somewhere up in Kentucky, Lake City, they have that information, but the council can vote. You'll vote? Well, before he was, when we moved Reverend Kaufman, he was discussing that issue of council vote and by that time, you know, he was moved for, but that, the council can vote.
Well, it was still, it was still personal, so just move forward. Anybody else have anything to say? Anybody else? Okay, thank you. We're going to go to item number two, bids, contracts, proposals.
Excuse me, ma'am. I didn't hear what you just said. Did I ask if anybody else had anything? No, we're for that. You said it was personal?
Yes.
No.
All right, so we go to number two, bids, contracts, proposals.
Okay. Um, why is that considered personal with some accusations?
Uh, um, we, we, this is city council, this is not a public forum for this. You want to discuss, call, have an appointment with me and I'll discuss.
You can get one.
All right. Number two, we're going to talk about bids, contracts, and proposals, service requested. Uh, I'm going to give Jessica the floor.
And before she goes on, I'd just let you know that there was an item that I placed on your desk showing an addition to the service request that she'll discuss tonight.
If you wouldn't mind, maybe you can start with that one. Uh, the letter that's placed in front of you is a request for service for water and sewer for Copperfield subdivision phase five. Um, it's an addition of approximately forty-nine, uh, additional lots in the Copperfield subdivision. And they have requested, made a request for service and, um, I guess I would ask you, the council, to approve that, um, addition of service. They've admitted plans, they meet requirement and they're preparing their, uh, documents to be sent to division of water for approval. So I'd just like to ask the council committee approve that request so that it can be accepted into our public infrastructure system. These phases, this phase was already anticipated, um, in the original development of the subdivision in compliance with the pump station files and force name and so forth, so it's just following through with say phase five. So the mayor of the council would like to make a motion to the accept that for the water sewer request for Copperfield phase five.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the request for the water main and sewer plan for phase five of Copperfield subdivision with the caveat that all the required engineering and studies are done and permitting and annexation is needed. It is, uh, I think this part of the...
I'll say the motion. I think Councilman Simpson had his hand up first. Discussion. On the floor, there is a, uh, motion by Councilman Hagan to accept the sewer hook by, by, uh, make sure that it meets with phase five of Copperfields for the overall development, uh, and for the installation of pump stations and force name, as long as it's done by engineering.
Right, the pump station work is already there.
It's already there, okay.
For water and sewer stuff.
So the water sewer service are provided if the engineering is done and is approved by the city. So all in favor? Aye. All right. Those opposed? I'll have it.
And the second item would be the recent hat, the mowing bid for variations of city property for the commentary and support. It's a bid that we, uh, proposed out every two year, two year bid, year contract, and we low bidder with Oliver's Lawn Service. They were the contractor who had the contract for this path to your term and they were a slow game. So if there's any questions, I can try to answer any, but can it just continue and move on if that would be it.
Mayor, if I may order?
Yes.
Uh, I'm moved to approve the bid from Oliver's Lawn Service, provide mowing service for city properties and authorize the mayor to sign, uh, a one-year contract in the amount of one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. I yield the floor for a second.
One clarification, Councilman Williams, it's a two-year contract.
Okay. Two-year contract.
Thank you.
I'll say that. Motion was by Councilman Rowland Williams to accept Oliver's Lawn Service for thirteen hundred and ninety dollars for a period of two-year contract. Also want to add, make sure that we do have insurance in there. Okay. So all in, uh, all in favor? Those opposed? Uh, Oliver's Lawn Service has a contract.
The next item is the twenty fifteen bulk chemical bid. Each year, we put out a bid for all chemicals which, which the wastewater and the water treatment plant utilize and that bid would tell on the board itself. And in your packet is the, basically the bid tab with indication in yellow highlights all of the low bidders. I will make one correction that for hydrogen peroxide, the same price for both water and wastewater and that bid went to chemical resources at, uh, point two three seven five cents per pound. But it's, unless there's any specific questions, um, it's pretty, it'd be very tedious to announce each one for each chemical, um, but this is very standard, we pretty much use the same chemicals every year, um, except if there's any questions. Just a note, if you're curious about how these numbers look in comparison to last year, um, on average, most of them are right around the same, there's a few that were, um, lower by anywhere from five to ten percent, you know, decreasing price, some went up, up to twenty percent, but on average, they were probably in the same ballpark, five to ten percent, probably five percent increase overall, but again, you're talking, some of them, the five percent went from the five cents, you know, on that, we get down with the chemicals. Pretty happy with it, no crazy numbers. At this time, I would ask that the council approve the recommended low diggers for the
Well, I'll make the motion to accept the recommendation from this new department involving, uh, bulk chemical bids two thousand and fifteen, specifically those highlighted in yellow on the packet being taken, I recommend we approve those for purchase. Motion is on the table, approve the two thousand and fifteen chemical bid tab for wastewater treatment plants. Uh, motion is to accept the, the bid tabs that are marked in yellow by the corporate
I, I did have a question.
Yes, you do.
And I may have not heard you. Uh, the people that are getting these bids, are they the ones that generally are low bidder class and we do business with them all the time?
Yeah, or oftentimes throughout the year, if there's a new chemical company that is asked to put on our bid list, we include that and send them out. So we do a public advertisement as well as send out packets to all people who have been awarded bids in the past who have asked to be on our bid list and/or currently supplying to us.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I'll have it. Motion's adopted.
Okay. Item C, request for drainage easement variance for property of Lipick six oh two, make that slight correction, for Bloomfield Road, um, via Mr. Matthew Pike. There's a property at six oh two Bloomfield Road that has a thirty-foot drainage easement along a portion of it and he's looking at purchasing the property and had proposed two building additions on each end, it was L-shaped building. So it was going to protrude, the proposal was getting encroached into the thirty-foot easement approximately four feet on one corner, on one of the addition and approximately, about nine feet. approximately four feet on one corner, on one of the addition, and approximately, about nine feet the, the corner on the other end of the building. I would recommend that we enter into an encroachment, easement encroachment agreement with Mr. Height and allow the addition, encroachment into the easement as they are shown. The building addition proposed on, I guess it'd be the front of the building towards Barstown would be, there's already an existing paved parking lot in that entire area at the same elevation. So having this building come out really doesn't change any characteristics of what's happening in that drainage easement at this time. Similar thing in the rear, already approaching out into an area where there's pavement. And the swell just back there doesn't start for another probably fifteen feet in the back of the property. So this addition, in my opinion, and Larry's looked at it as well, doesn't really impede or create any problems within the drainage easement as it's proposed. And if he's on an internship, that's an encroachment agreement with the city, I would recommend that we would allow the encroachment as proposed to us.
So Jessica, that just handled through your office, that encroachment easement, or what you call that?
It's an easement, drainage, existing drainage easement on a flat for the property. And they're asking for.
I understand, I understand, it's the, the, the formality that we go through, something for us to improve, is that something through your office?
Yes.
Point of interest. If some of the other councilmen, if you remember, and I think you remember, there, Mr. Harrison that has the blacktop paving company, he had it on the parking lot, and it's not gonna interfere with any of that drainage? Cause I know there was a drainage issue back there.
This general area of town is very flat, and there was a reason initially that this easement was created because again, things don't drain very well. And again, my recommendation is based only upon what they're showing on this sheet. Any further changes to grade elevations, filling of any existing swells in that area would not be recommended or encouraged. But as the property currently sits, so long as there's not, I don't see any property damage or anything that happens that currently sits, so with a proposal, there's no change in anything from an elevation or filling of the easement in any way. There's basically no grade change being proposed.
And Councilman Hagan, Jessica and I have worked on a contract today that ties those points down. Pretty solid contract.
So that, that's just, that's a document that's, that's handled through Jessica's office and owner, and that's, that's.
But it requires our approval.
Yeah, I would certainly feel better if the council would approve. Are there any other questions? Would I, would I add, would I add your motion to approve the encroachment?
And, uh, Jessica Williams.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay. Other than Jessica, I thought you wanted to.
Oh, okay. So I move to approve the layer requesting an easement for six oh two Bloomfield Road from Matthew Height. And according to our engineers, that there won't be any issues, and they're meeting all of the plant requirements. Am I saying that correctly?
Recommend an encroachment into the.
Alright. Insert those in my words, please. And I, I yield the floor for a second.
I'll second. Use this motion.
Well, I'll just briefly describe it. Uh, the motion, uh, need discussion. Motion's on the floor to accept the, uh, variance and/or encroachment permit from Matthew Height by the, by the city, as long as that is approved by the engineering department. All in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. Mr. Green? Number D? Tanner Hill?
Uh, we have, uh, discussed before the, uh, grant that we have from, from the state for fifty-six seven five hundred dollars for the purchase of a piece of property between North First Street and the Old Kentucky Home State Park. And we have a, uh, an offer from the owners of that property, uh, Tanner Creek, I think it's called, is, uh, to, to purchase it for sixty-four hundred dollars per acre, and there are sixteen point one acres in the latest, uh, latest survey. And so what, uh, what we'd like to do is get a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with, uh, then it's Tanner Creek LLC, uh, for the purchase of that property for the, the price of sixty-four hundred dollars an acre. And then once that, uh, if, if that is approved, then it will go up to the, uh, up to the state, they'll, they'll review that, we'll get a, a formal survey, and, uh, we can have a closing. Whenever that's done, that may take a little while to get it all the way through the redneck gap.
Hi, well, question for the attorney. You know, you check property, make sure there's no name, or no, I guess, what's that, what's that word?
Francis, we, we, we have done a, uh, a title.
Yes.
Search, we've got a title opinion, we, um, if you recall, I think we authorized that, um, we took bids on, on, um, title attorneys and also, um, but anyway, that was, that was completed, and, uh, and it has a clear title, and then that, that, that title opinion has gone to the state, and they've okayed it.
Okay.
Um, as long as we're alright with the planning and zoning restrictions and the, the easements, which there are a lot of easements over that property, and there's a power line and some other things.
Okay, good.
And then we also got, uh, an appraisal. And at this, uh, the, the amount that we would pay for this property, uh, is not over the appraised value. That was one of the conditions of the state, that, that we couldn't pay any more than the appraised value of the property.
I move.
I can ask my question, I'd like to ask before we vote though.
Okay. Point of interest.
Uh, sixteen thousand, how much is our, sixteen thousand eight hundred?
Uh, no, sixty-four hundred dollars an acre. Is the appraised.
The, the check we will be writing is.
Well, it would be, uh, if the, if the final survey comes in, and it's actually sixteen point one acres, then it will be a hundred and two thousand four hundred.
And the city's portion of that would be?
It would be the difference between that and eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars that we're going, that we've been allocated from the Heritage Land Conservation Fund.
That would be the price for sixteen acres. Sixteen point one acre would be a hundred and three thousand and forty dollars. Less than eighty-six thousand five hundred we expect to receive from Commonwealth. We'd be writing a check for sixteen five forty, plus some other incidental fees as required by the Commonwealth, a thousand or two dollars.
And the reason for this, uh, purchase is, you know, is it is a, it's a piece of property that we can use as a park area, maybe hiking trails and recreations, the city grows, and they need that. And it was a benefit to the city that I don't think that we could have passed, uh, for the price. When, especially when there was the, the amount of money that was involved, and we had paid nothing. And I might add to what the mayor stated, it's also an opportunity for us to have some additional green space. And so that's, that's of importance to the city.
I move that the mayor be authorized to enter into a contract to purchase approximately sixteen acres of land located between South First and the Amptiater Road, Barstown, Kentucky, from David Manley for sixty-four hundred dollars per acre, which is the same property for which the city received an eighty-six thousand five hundred dollar grant from the Kentucky Heritage Land Conservation Fund.
I'll second the motion. Discussion. The motion's on the table to purchase the land at Tanner Hill and authorize the mayor to, uh, sign the contract and the, uh, the full seller's profit, or the purchase of this property. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion's adopted. Thank you, gentlemen. Then, uh, HRB planning and zoning recommendations, we have none of those? Okay. Correspondence, number four, if there's no objections, we'll adopt these motions to approve the two thousand fifteen Alzheimer's Forget-Not-Wall on three twenty-one, uh, two thousand fifteen. Since there's no objections, the motion is approved for the two thousand fifteen Alzheimer's Forget-Not-Wall on, uh, March the twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, and is adopted unanimously, consented. Number five, which is the minutes, I hope everybody had a chance to look at the minutes. So if there's no objections, yes, Councilman Williams?
I have objection. I vote no. On the man.
Play. And you, you have a correction on it?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting to the river council meeting of two thousand fifteen.
Discussion. Councilman Williams, reason why I'm no?
Reason why I'm no, I mean, councilman buck off, read off, no city, Poseidon, also, who is the mayor's responsibility to read that. Number two, no council member or the mayor can change language in this municipal order, twenty thirteen nineteen, if being amended or revised by the city council. And also recognizing individuals, only language indicated in that is recognizing individuals. It do not indicate no city business. So when you add in city business, you're adding new language to this municipal order. So to me, that's a violation.
Mr. Lydian, do you have an amendment to the minutes? Or a correction?
Correction on the minutes?
Yes, sir.
No, I'm, I, I voted no.
The vote hasn't come up, do you have an amendment or a correction to the minutes?
I will have a correction.
Alright.
Alright, can I, can I make an amendment? Councilman Buppens, in, uh, addressed to the audience with his personal penance, personal opinion regarding public influence from the people in attendance, and was not the, uh, opinion of the city council.
Since I made the motion to approve the minutes, all we're, all we're doing to approve the minutes is we're reflecting what happened. We're, we're saying, this is what happened in the minutes, this is what happened in the meeting. There's no reflection on why it happened, or shouldn't have happened, or what shouldn't have happened. This is what, when we approve the minutes of the meeting, we are saying, this is what happened.
I have my rights, vote no.
I'm, I'm commenting on Mr. Williams' suggestion of changing, of amending the minutes to add some comments about what should have happened, or shouldn't have happened. That's a separate discussion, I think, the reflection of the minutes is what happened. It's, it's just a statement of facts.
It's probably a point of interest, uh, Mr. Reynolds.
But you can't add anything to the minutes, and I agree with, uh, Councilman Hagan, you have to just follow what's there, you can't add nothing to it.
Once the meeting has occurred, as it's been recorded in these minutes, I agree with Councilman Hagan. That it's simply a, an account of what happened. Doesn't, a vote for it doesn't mean that you approve everything that happened, it just means that you're approving or disapproving of the fact that these minutes are reflecting what happened at that council meeting.
And to follow up on that, a means, minutes can be amended if there's a mistake. If somebody missed a vote, you know, or the set time was there that wasn't there, if there's a, an error, then the minutes are amended, and that's an appropriate amendment. So I guess my motion is going for it.
Is it starting? Yes.
Discussion. Since there's no objections, don't. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask for a vote, uh, for the motion, for the, for the minutes, and the motion is to pass the minutes for the two thousand, uh, two thousand and ten, um, correction, February tenth, two thousand fifteen, for the river council meeting. I'll talk for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Uh, five to one, eyes have it. Motion is approved, approve the minutes. Uh, since there'll be no financial report, there are no ordinances. Number eight, any unfinished business? Counciling, uh, unfinished business? New business. If there's no objection, uh, we will adopt the motion to approve the reappointment of trees and maddocks to the Barstown Housing Authority. If there's no objection, the motion is, is approved, uh, to reappoint trees and maddocks, uh, is adopted by you now, consented. Thank you. Committee reports. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Take your back out, need glasses.
A resolution, our two thousand fifteen oh three tax assessment moratorium. A resolution accepting the application for an assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at three oh two South Third Street, Barstown, Kentucky, and expressing the city's intent to grant an assessment moratorium to the owner of said property upon compliance with the city's property assessment and reassessment moratoriums as defined in KRS chapter ninety-nine point five nine five. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Barstown, Kentucky, that section one, the application for assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at three oh two South Third Street, Barstown, Kentucky, is hereby accepted and further expressing the city's intent to grant an assessment moratorium to the owner of said property upon compliance with the city's property assessment and reassessment moratoriums as defined in KRS chapter ninety-nine point five nine five. I don't know what that means. Bruce?
That sect means and other statutes.
And other statutes, thank you. Section two, that this order shall take effect and be in full force when passed and recorded according to law.
Since there's, uh, since there's. So you gotta ask for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution R. two thousand fifteen dash oh three Tax Assessment Moratorium.
Discussion? Uh, the motion that is set forth is a tax moratorium on, a resolution, I'm sorry, R. two thousand fifteen oh three at three oh two South Third Street, in Barstown. Call for a question. I'm sorry, we're not called for a question.
Oh, you're asking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Oh, opposed? Eyes have it. Number ten, committee reports, Councilman Simpson, you have the floor.
We have a cemetery committee meeting, and a couple, two of the main topics were the, we've been talking about for years, we had several small CDs that were just individuals, and we brought those together, now we've, uh, got them at, grouped in two different CDs, and we're combined at a hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and forty-one cents. It was just a lot better to keep up with them, of different banks at different times, so we decided we would do that. And the other thing we've done voted on tonight is our Mullen contract, that's a big thing every year, and we had a discussion on that, and seemed like we were satisfied with the group, and the recommendation was that we go with the, the lower bid on that. There's work at Phil's County Plant, excuse me, for the higher end of the cemetery, that is ongoing, and he's gonna be working on it, it's the weather and time permit. Anything else, Fred? May I question one minute?
Uh, just, just a question. Did you say we had small, two small CDs?
We had several small CDs that we grouped, and there were two of, uh, CDs that amounted to a hundred and forty-five thousand, compared to then plenty of the other ones that were in the stack.
Any other councilmen want to refer to, in your committee meetings or scheduled warnings?
Reverend, I have anything to report on as far as the new, but we're scheduling an annexation in the four o'clock, five, two o'clock. Is there any annexation in it? Do you have certain committee?
Ten? We'll give the, uh, to all the members, section is, pulled in on the agenda. Still working on the agenda. Larry, do you have anything? Mr. Green?
Who's there?
Chief?
Nothing, David.
Final move?
Uh, we've had, since the snow mounds come in, uh, since last Monday, we've had over twenty calls in the area. We've had several car fires, just want to kind of inform the public that, you know, when you get out here and you get stuck in these snow mounds and snowbanks and everything, it costs your car to heat up, and you're gonna, you're gonna end up with your, seeing us there with a big fire, trying to put your car out, so. Get hung up, whatever, don't sit there and mash on it, or down it for ten or fifteen minutes, 'cause, like I said, we're gonna be there, so. Call a buddy, call a repair service, leave it be until it melts, whatever it takes, but if you don't, you're gonna see it.
Ms. Jessica?
I don't think, we haven't had any committee meeting thus far, but I am, we'll be coming to the council here soon, we are currently advertising for bid, um, a, an addition for a wash bay building on, at the Public Works shop, so we've got that advertised currently, and so that bid will be coming in soon again, it's just for the steel and the metal and foundations for, for the two-sided addition, it'll be just a straight drive through, so the Public Works in-house crews will be doing the rest of the work, but we've got that out for bid, and I'll be having a few other bids coming up in the coming months, in the attempt to try to get a lot of our maintenance work, we're painting some clear wells with the water plant, doing some undercutting work on the, uh, North Second Street between Broadway and Reshir, where there's some pavement failure, um, so there's things on our radar that we're working on. Currently, what, there is some construction going on for the Wickland Boone Sewer Line is, is underway. Uh, the weather obviously has got that back somewhat, so we can't, didn't really do much for the past week, um, but we look for that to get started hopefully again next week. Um, but we've just kind of carried on, Public Works has been incredibly, incredibly busy. We've, I'm saying, we have a lot of things to do, we've just left two weeks, it was snow and stuff, freezing temperatures extended, we've had, um, plenty of water issues and just trying to keep the streets tight, so, that's all I have.
Uh, we've got, I know Pado's will probably be showing up, but I haven't seen very many when I drive around looking, not, because I've seen too bad.
Well, those will show themselves after everything's kind of knocked away, so we'll find them, as far as.
We have no cemetery deeds. Yes, we have, I'm sorry.
Since the mayor is going to be out of town next week on March the third, I wanted to know if the council would like to have a working session on March the third, which is the first Tuesday of the month. Well, if you all decide, please let me know before Friday. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to compliment the crew on the, the creek, if anybody hasn't been down by the, below the mill, we're, uh, we've been working on for a long time to, uh, get it done, and it's in progress, and it looks real, real good. Of course, the snow stopped them, but they were moving along pretty good, so.
Now, it's not, it's not finished, but.
Yeah, we're talking about, I'm sorry.
Back Fourth Street.
Oh, yeah, I'll go pass every day, you know, with y'all.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I stopped by and I saw Frank Douglas, and he was telling me, he was, he was very complimentary of the work we were doing, I think I called you, Jessica, and told you.
Yeah.
He was very complimentary of the work that was being done back there, and really a long time coming, but I'm really glad that we're able to get to that.
Hopefully it'll be a, a permanent solution.
That project actually started in the, in two thousand five, discussion with Mayor Hibbs, when I come up with the city council of water and sewer, Bobby and I have been down there many times during the rain, getting the, the big drain in front of the Woodson Park cleaned out, and we've been hitting on this drain for many years, Bobby. About ten years, and we've been, you know, here it is, two thousand fifteen, and we've got it plugged in, and it's, and it's going, and I think it's in the right direction.
Can I finish that?
Mm-hmm, that was the thing. It's been a long time, it's been a long work, but, um.
Council, you got anything else?
Just, just point of interest, A C A, what, what does that stand for? Something City, something, American City Association or something?
American Cable Association.
Oh, American Cable Association, okay. Thank you. And I, I guess you guys are going by MOPAD or something?
Uh, well, I actually, going on the, no. No.
Mayor, if we're ready, I'll make a motion to adjourn the session pursuant to K R S sixty-one point eighteen, amendment B, deliberations on the future sale of real property by public agency, but only in public, if we like to affect the value of a specific piece of property that you can sell by public agency.
Second. Motion.
Session? All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. We're now to, the move to go into executive session. Uh, let the record reflect that the Reverend City Council meeting will now continue, let the minister reflect that there was no action taken during the executive session. Any additional business to discuss? Council, Larry?
I have a question. Earlier, we, you had stated about, um, we, he had read a, a statement, and then you said we would discuss this at a later time, do you know when we will discuss that? You had made a statement that we would discuss about, I think, the gentleman that stood up, the Reverend, I don't know his name, okay, he stood up and asked a question, and Ms. Shekels stood up and asked a question. Do you know when we will discuss that? How will we discuss that? Surely it won't be in a council meeting, so.
It needs to be in a council meeting.
So it will be in a council meeting, so.
Sure, this is your meeting, you discuss it between yourselves, and.
So how are they gonna get a meeting with the mayor?
That's not the questions to ask.
That was the question that they did ask, though, right?
That's, that's a question. You got any, is any other business on that?
Well, Bruce, how do Reverend Hoffman ask the question about, or make a statement about something that I was not aware of, how they could get a meeting with the mayor? Poor people, so, and things of that nature. Is that legitimate? Is that correct? Was he right with what he said? Because I wasn't aware of anything that he had mentioned.
It's my opinion that anyone can ask the mayor for a meeting, and if he wishes to accommodate them, I suspect a meeting would be set up. Now, that gentleman said something about racist remarks, or racist.
I, I'm not addressing that, I'm asking about the meeting part.
I think that's when the mayor decided that wasn't part of city business. I know no statute or rule that says that gentleman cannot call the mayor and ask for a meeting.
Okay, there's no objections, we will adopt the motion till January. Since there's no objection, the motion to January is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, Councilman.